This time, Mr. Fossett will give the roll call. Ames.
Here.
Bonner.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
Neal.
Here.
Patrick.
Here.
Proll.
Here.
Showman.
Here.
Patton.
Here.
Churchill.
Here.
Everyone stand for the pledge.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone has received in their packets our minutes for our last council session. Do we have a motion to Mr. Bonner? Second by Mrs. Neal. Roll call. Ames.
Yes.
Bonner.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Proll.
Yes.
Showman.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Churchill.
Yes.
That brings us to reports of committees. Mrs. Patrick.
Thank you, President Prother and Churchill. Utilities Committee has two items on tonight's agenda. Item number five is the second reading of an ordinance to appropriate $27,200 to cover the city's management funds to purchase two new replacement buses for use within the Transit Department. This will go all three groups. Item number 16 is authorizing the granting of an easement right away by Pilot Travel Center to the city for the installation of a fire hydrant and a water line and appliances. I will ask at the appropriate time, we do waive the three read on this because if you notice Pilot has just been flying on infrastructure, we're going to be done quick. And this is not costing the city any money. They're going to do all the work to install it. Pilot will provide the materials for just giving us the easement. So if there's no questions on that, I'm done.
Thank you, Mrs. Patrick. Anyone else? Do you vote for committee? Mrs. Ames.
Thank you, President Prother and Churchill. Development has two items on the agenda tonight. Item number three is the third reading of a resolution authorizing the appropriation of funds in the amount of $7,012 as participating local funds for 2015 to the Ohio Valley Regional Development Commission on behalf of the city of Chillicothe. This is an annual request. Item 11 is the first reading of an ordinance for amendment 98-88. I held a committee meeting on this on July 3rd. In 1988, three parcels of land owned by Morse were annexed into the city. Just recently, the Norse went to the building department looking to expand on one of the parcels. It was discovered that the number of acres listed in the third whereas section is incorrect. The number reads 5.722 acres and it should read 17.608. The annexation plat nap and the surveyor's descriptions correctly reflect this number of 17.608. It was just a typographical error upon the ordinance. Because this is correcting a mistake, at the appropriate time, I will ask you to waive the three read rule and pass this tonight. And I can put my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Ames. Mr. Proll.
Safety Service Committee has five items on tonight's agenda. Most of them are related to the same item, really, but we'll go through these. Item number eight is to appropriate $155,000 for the purchase of a squad for the Chillicothe Fire Department and appropriate $1,300 for bond council fees and authorize contract. This goes as part of purchasing a new squad to replace the squads that we have been having all those repair issues with in our fleet. And at the appropriate time, we will ask to waive the three read rule. And the reason being, there is a cost savings to the city to purchase this before next month. And we have been aware that this is in the works. I know that we've waited most of summer for this purchase, but we did have to get all the financing straightened out. So we do have that ready for us now. Also, part of this same squad purchase is item number nine, which is to declare a particular vehicle obsolete or not needed and authorize its sale simultaneously with the purchase of the new emergency squad vehicle. We're going to take and determine which of the existing squads they will basically trade in to try to reduce the cost. And stepping away from that one for a moment, item number 10 is to appropriate $5,336.50 for the purchase of a radio for the Chillicothe Police Department to capture emergency broadcasts for the Chillicothe City Schools. This money will be coming out of the Law Enforcement Trust Fund, so it does not affect our general fund. Since school will be starting soon, I would like to respectfully ask that we waive the three read rule for that as well. So that they can purchase that and get that in place for the safety of the children. Item number 15 goes back to our squad purchase. This provides for the insurance of not to exceed $100,000 Emergency Medical Services Vehicle Acquisition Bond. And this would be for the bond. Since this is related, again, I'll ask to waive the three read rule. And we can get this squad in place. By getting this squad in place, we will be cutting back some of the costs that we've been incurring on these repairs, on the existing squads. Last but not least, item number 17, which is to accept and appropriate $10,444 received from the U.S. Department of Justice, Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, also known as JAG. This program is for the purchase of a traffic trailer which indicates motorist speed in target areas. And I think we're all familiar with how these work. The Sheriff's Department currently has one and you can place it along a street and allow motorists to kind of get a wake-up call to how fast they're traveling on that street. This has been setting for a while, and I would ask that we could waive the three read rule and purchase this trailer and get it to use. That concludes Safety Services. Anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
None? Thank you, Mr. Proll. Mrs. Gray.
Thank you, President Prother and Churchill. Tonight, we have item number 12 for the Human Resources Committee, which is the first reading on an ordinance to incorporate a new pay scale for the position of full-time municipal court security officer into the Chillicothe Municipal Court's 2015 budget. And since this is something that does not have emergency, we don't offer you that.
Thank you, Mrs. Gray. Anyone else? Okay, that brings us to Finance Committee. There are six items on tonight's Finance Committee agenda. Item one, declaring the necessity of amending sections 16303, 16308, and 16316 of the codified ordinances to increase the city income tax levy from 1.6% to 1.8%, with such increase to be used exclusively towards maintenance and repair of the city streets and alleys and to place set amendments before they electors on November 4th, 2014. Item two is to amend sections 16303, 16308, and 16316 for codified ordinances to increase the city tax, income tax, from levy of 1.6% to 1.8%, with such increase to be applied for exclusive purpose of repair and maintenance of the city streets and alleys. Item six is declare necessity of amending the same sections to increase the city income tax from a levy of 1.6% to 2%. Such increase would be used exclusively towards maintenance, repair of the city streets and alleys and for operation and maintenance of the police and city streets and alleys of the city, maintenance and repair of city streets and alleys and for operation and maintenance of the police and fire departments to be placed before the electors on November 4th. Item seven is to amend the same sections to increase the city income tax levy from 1.6% to 2%. Such increase to be applied exclusively for the purpose of repairing and maintaining the streets and alleys within the city and for operation and maintenance of the police and fire departments. Item 13 is to appropriate $12,612.60 for the final payment of a 10-year no-interest loan from the Ohio Public Works of 2004 Street program. I'm sure, Mr. Feeney, should that be waived?
It does not have to be.
Okay, thank you. Item 14 is to appropriate $20,000 for expenses associated with ongoing litigation of Walton City. And at this time, I'd like to make a motion to not read that legislation tonight. Second by Mrs. Ames. Roll call, Mr. Fossett? Ames.
Yes.
Bonner.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Proll.
Yes.
Showman.
Yes.
Patton. Yes. Churchill.
Yes.
This time, I'd like to hear from some members of council with regard to items one, two, six, and seven. I'd like to get an understanding. Remember, stand. And if you don't want to, that's fine with me also. But they kind of disagree with each other. Personally, items one and two should not, should be tabled. Which leaves us six and seven for the second reading tonight. Anyone else? Want to try now? Mrs. Patrick?
I would have no problem tabling one and two, but I'd like to see some more language added to numbers six and seven. You need to make it a little bit more defined as to what we're paying for the other two tents. It's hard to explain to the public if you don't know. With the first two tents, we've criticized streets and alleys. And with the second two tents, we've blanked it, Safety Services. I think we need to be a little bit more explicit with that.
Sure, that will be done. Is there anything in particular you'd like, or have you talked to Mr. Feeney about that?
Well, I talked with Yonah Raffini about that, and I'll let him address it. Yeah.
We discussed a couple topics. Councilwoman Patrick's first thought was related to Mayor Eversen's suggestion that there was a commitment to hiring a certain number of people in addition to maybe a specific item of equipment. As we went through that conversation, I think we came to the realization together that committing permanently to a certain number of people or certain positions might not make sense in a levy necessarily. But we may be able to, and this might be a conversation with the law director, perhaps the clerk, as to including some of the reasoning possibly in the ordinance description as to the reason for the necessity to maintain specific staffing, which might not give us, legally obligate us, but would give us a reference point in looking back what the necessity of the tax was. The other suggestion that was possible would be that we could recommit the full safety levy capital back to the Safety Services Department. I think everybody in this room is well aware that probably for the past three to five years, we borrowed from the safety levy capital fund. This year will be $350,000, which considerably restricts both departments' ability to have a full capital maintenance plan. Jeff Creach, Chief Creach here tonight, I'm sure, to support his purchase of the squad. We end up paying in both departments a significant amount of money for the maintenance of vehicles when we don't have that capital money earmarked. And I think that that would, that might be language. I don't know if Councilwoman Patrick and I came to an agreement, but those are the types of things that we've discussed that might make it more specific. There's currently language. I'll step back. When the safety levy capital ordinance, when the safety levy ordinance was originally passed, there was no language to permit borrowing half of that money. That language was passed at a later time. And so essentially what you would do is potentially remove that language so that full, it would turn into 1/6 would be committed to capital. So those are just a couple of the items. I couldn't flesh out a way that you would actually have, and I don't think we would want to commit to particular staffing numbers in a tax levy. But certainly in the ordinance description, this body and future bodies could refer to the ordinance for recollection as to what the necessity was for, as if nothing else, guidance. Councilwoman Patrick, did I miss any?
No. The only thing, we talked about putting a time limit on it, 10 years. And that was something so we could maybe gain some trust back from the public. You know, let them know we do realize there's a huge amount of suspicion and distrust on both Capitol and administration. And this is kind of our way of trying to put some teeth into it, so we can control it and hopefully it will turn out okay. But Auditor Feeney did an excellent job, and I bounced everything off him because he knows the legal stuff where I don't.
And so as far as, as far as a time-limited levy, that would be something that I don't think the city has seen before, at least not that I've seen in the ordinances, as far as an income tax. Obviously, property tax levies are often time-limited. And I think Councilwoman Patrick's point is right. You know, this economic climate, you know, there's a variety of reasons that time-limited tax, income tax levy seems to be a reasonable choice and certainly a doable choice from my perspective.
Well, tonight's the second reading. I believe that by the third reading will be next Monday. And I believe that by that time, that language should be included in this legislation. Can we do that now?
We can. And the only thing that worries me is we keep tweaking the language and that we're going to get something that I haven't been able to run past the Board of Elections to make sure because if the language is not correct and the levy passes, we run the risk of losing it. So it worries me that we're tweaking everything at the last minute because it's something we're not used to doing. And so, yeah, I don't want to mess up. I'll put that out there right now. I don't want to mess this up. I don't want it to come back on me. So I do want to get it in a final form soon.
Well, between you and Luke, that's what happened.
I mean, I think it's reasonable to say whatever we lead with tonight will be, that's it.
Yeah. I think that, I mean.
I can understand.
We need to come to consensus because we need to permit and make sure. There's a couple people I want to run it by to say, this passes, then we have the right language in there. Because the revised code is not really helpful. I think we only have to mention three things for the revised code. We have two things.
I don't know, the revised code has a habit of confusing voters.
Yes. And that's the other thing too. You don't want to confuse the voters because if you want it to pass, we want it to make it so that people understand what they're voting for or against.
Anyone else wish to try now? Mr. Bonner?
Oh, thank you, President Prother and Churchill. Yes, to put the temporary, the 10-year time limit on that, to me makes good sense. This is not perfect. You know, everybody, this is nothing wanting to be what everybody wanted. Or no one's getting exactly what they want, I should say. But I think it's a nice compromise, considering at one time we were going for 0.2%. Then we were going to go for 2.2%. And now we're going for 1.4%. So just in the spirit of compromise, I think it's a good idea. I think as Ms. Patrick said, it's a good way to earn the trust of the voters that they say, hey, they have more control over the money. And I certainly agree with Ms. Rutherford, this is crunch time. We are at the very end. And we need to kind of get it right, that we're good. I'm glad Mr. Churchill wants, or Mr. Feeney, to help out on that project. So that'll be nice. But yes, I think, I think, I think we're here. We got to send it to the voters. We got to make up our mind so we can get it right, so it goes to the ballot correctly, that the voters have their say and will abide by their wishes.
Thank you, Mr. Bonner. But bear in mind that our commitment to safety is going to be a long time, not just 10 years. I'll go along with this 10-year thing. I know, you know, the council will do, but it's not going to go away. We're going to have to be committed to safety, right, be committed to our streets, and that's why we're doing this.
And 10 years from now, there will be an administration and there will be a council. They'll have more information, more current information than we obviously have, what it's going to be like in 2024. So.
I understand.
Things could change by then, or it might not be needed to.
Just passing the ball to somebody else's court.
Someone who has more information than what we will have.
Hopefully.
Hopefully.
Anyone else wish to speak? Members of council? Mrs. Neal?
I just wanted to say that I, I still support the separate levies. There, there are two distinct uses. And I think that voters would like to vote on each one on their own merit. But I understand that we, we have to take action here and that we need to present a solid front. And I certainly am for both levies. So even though I would have, I would prefer to see them separate. Be a team player and go with the group.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Mr. Proll.
And I'll kind of go off what Beth said. I've really done a lot of search, you know, soul-searching on this over the last week. Which is better? You know, I think both options are, there's neither, neither one of the options that we presented are necessarily bad. I think there's one that's better. And I think that this process that we've been through, where we've discussed this, really makes me proud of this particular council in that we have been able to, you know, kind of fight it out, work it out, and come to a place where we can present something that we're confident in what we're asking the voters. And what we're asking is for them to make an investment back in the city. When we look at it that way, I think that putting them together makes sense. We're asking not just for streets, but also to maintain our safety levels. Both of these are of equal importance. As I really looked at it, I thought, why do we want to see these separate? And the only reason I could see to separate these things was that we felt uncomfortable with what we're able to do with one and not the other. This 10-year cap, I think, is a good way to address that problem. It gives us the opportunity to show the city that when they make this investment, they're going to get their money's worth. Because the pressure will be on the council and the administration to do that over the course of the next 10 years. And why 10 years? Well, to actually make any headway on these streets, we do need a window of time to do that. And so I do support the combining. I think that's, you know, the best way to go forward. Both these items are important to each and every citizen. And asking them, you know, honestly, to make this investment in their city, regardless of who's sitting here right now, is a, is a big step. And it's probably the most important investment the city of Chillicothe will make in itself. And I really hope that we can get the message out and get people behind it. And I think that, you know, by offering them this, this olive branch and show that we, you know, trust them to hold us to our word. And, and I think we will keep our word with this, obviously. Because we here on council want to see the streets repaved. We want to see our safety forces remain strong because we are just making, you know, headway in this war on drugs. And as our population grows, having our fire department there to protect us is going to be paramount to everyone's safety. So I support the combining. I support the 10-year cap. And I hope that we can move forward with this in our next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Proll. Anyone else? Mrs. Gray?
I agree with what Congressman Patrick has said with regard to the language. We need accountability with regard to the safety portion of the legislation that we're proposing. By the same token, we don't want to make our voters choose between sound streets and safe streets. We want to make sure that we provide them with the best option of what they need. But in providing the best option of what they need, we want to make sure that there's accountability for whatever money that may be involved with giving them the best option. By combining the legislation, we're not making them choose. We're giving them what they need, when they need it, and have a look. And it's something that we need to take into consideration. That it's not about in this climate of what we're dealing with, with individuals. It's not about the fees, but it's about the departments and what they provide to our constituents, to the city. And that's something that council needs to take into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Gray. Anyone else? Mrs. Ames?
Thank you, President Prother and Churchill. I had amended the 0.4 from the beginning, and I really applaud council for compromising and for working through this, I agree with, with what has been said as far as people taking the time looking things over and, and doing what is, what is best for the city, for the residents, for the police and fire department, the streets. We want to be seen as a progressive city, not one that's just hanging on by a fingernails. We want to be seen as a business-friendly city that when business book relocate here, that we are willing to do what it takes to support them in their efforts to improve our city streets, safety of the citizens. The two, two issues in my mind are very inclined, that doing them separately gives the impression that they're two separate issues, that they're really a one issue. Trying to make our city better moving forward. And we can, we can separate them, but that, that gives kind of a wrong picture to residents saying, well, if we pass part of this, that's okay, we can pass the other. They, they really need to be moving forward. We need to move them together. The 10-year, I believe, is a, is a good point Mr. Bonner said. We don't know what 10 years from now the city situation is going to look like. We know that we're going to keep supporting the streets. We're going to keep supporting the police and fire department. There are maybe some other sorts of funding that comes available that we wouldn't have to renew the levy. But that's always an option. We can, but continually neither. Our expenses continue to go up. And if you do the math, the amount of money that we had 10 years ago to burn the city on and the amount we need now is much greater. Just for an example, I just found out last week at a meeting that our salt last year was $45 a ton. It is now $78 a ton this year. So if we would order the exact same amount of salt this year as last year, our price would go from $34,000 to $60,000. So now we have a choice. Do we not order salt because it's not, we're not going to have money for it? And then what happens when the snow comes and we don't have salt in the streets? Residents won't like that. Residents won't like that. So there, there are a lot of factors that are just beyond our control, and so what we're trying to do is make the best plan for the city to operate, to continue the spark that has been claimed by the Carlo. I don't think that's what I'm using. The, that was my, my, sorry. The excitement that has come with the Carlo in High Valley J and Edgers and the East and Pizza Shop and all the different places that have, as a result of Carlo, a catalyst for all these developments. And we want to continue to bring people into the town and continue, and when a business comes in and sees, yeah, they're taking care of the streets. And yeah, they have a good ISO rating with the fire, because the fire departments have been where it should be and learning where it should be. Those are things businesses look at. And we want to make sure that we can do this to the businesses and to residents.
Thank you, Mrs. Ames. Anyone else? And at this time, I'd like to make a motion to table item one, second by Mr. Paul. We'll call. Ames?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Showman?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
And at this time, I'd like to make a motion to table item two, second by Mr. Paul. We'll call. Ames?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Showman?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
And that concludes my report. Bring us to reports committees. Acting Mayor, Mayor.
Yes, thank you, President President Churchill. Thank you for covering for me while I covered for Jack in such a 17-itemed meeting tonight. I didn't want to do that to you, so.
No problem.
First off, Mayor Eversen asked Safety Director Green to be here to see and to be able to give a statement on, on the situation with Chief Moore. I'll take the beginning part of my, to allow Mr. Green to be able to give his statement. Thanks for coming, Mike.
Good evening, everybody. I know it's been a tough day for everybody. Also news hit of the events of last Friday, it became apparent that we needed to get out in front of it. So a fair release that doesn't actually answer all the questions that people have, but I think folks will understand that what we're doing here is the prudent thing, and it's the most important thing that we can do at this time. On Friday, Police Chief Roger Moore was placed on paid administrative leave until further notice. Need to make clear that this is a personnel matter. Mayor, Mayor Eversen is away, and he is unavailable due to a previously planned vacation. And so he's expected to return on Friday, August the first, and at that time, a full statement will be made available to everybody regarding what's happened here, what's going on. And I can't comment any further on the details of that, but Chillicothe Police Department is in capable hands with three captains, Captain Teeter, Washburn, and Bamfield. Captain Washburn is currently acting chief, and everything's going smoothly today, and there's no issues. So just want to let you know that the process will begin to take place on Friday, when Mayor Eversen returns. And at that time, all the questions and all the concerns that people have will be addressed. I just ask for your patience. There's actually no way to speed this up, and if we could, we would, but we can't. So at this point, I just ask for your patience, to tell everything that's not on Friday. If you're aware and you understand why this is happening, please.
Okay. Thank you, Safety Director. Very good.
Thank you, Mike. On the legislation, I would, I would like to ask and ask council support for item number three, the appropriation of $7,000, $7,012 to the Ohio Valley Regional Development Commission. Ask council's favorable support on the three ordinances related to the purchase of the squad. That actually has been a very long process. It is, the, the capital review of the fire department has been in committee, in Dustin's committee, really since the first of the year, so this has kind of been a long time coming. And I think Jeff's back there. Chief Creed, I want to thank you for your diligence and patience with this as well. I know your, your number one concern is a, a working squad that gets our residents to and from safely, efficiently, and all of that. So again, I want to publicly thank Chief Creed for all of his due diligence and actually patience as the legislative process comes to, to full effect. Would also like, urge council support on item 10, the appropriation of the $5,336 for the radios, for the police department, and item 17, the accepting of $10,444 for the trailer. And that's, that's a, that's a, that's a great asset. I, I remember when I was in Nancy's chair, I used to ask, at the time Sheriff Nichols to set that up on Pied Avenue all the time, and he would bless us with that, but we, we didn't have that as a city asset, we would need to go to the county. So that'll be a great asset for us, and anybody that's drove around and saw those, they make you slow down, especially when you're speeding and you really don't know you're speeding, and some of those thoroughfares that are, where the speed is a little faster than, where the speed tends to be a little faster than the law permits, and they'll follow, most residences is kind of go with the flow. But those are a good asset in a time of where we don't have the, the manpower to put a police officer all the time, timing, you're not gonna, it's, it's a good offset for that. Would also like to, to ask council's approval on the, Mrs. Patrick's report on the easement for the Pilot Flying J. And I would encourage anybody to drive down to the, to the East Main Street, and the dirt's flying, and, and things are going, and I, and I, and I'm, I'm very thrilled to see that project up and moving and coming to fruition. I think that we remind each other, that's a, that is a new service we're being, that's being provided to our community. We don't have a service station that, that fills up semi-trucks in that, that area where 50, 35, and 23 all come together in that little strip right before you exit off. Not only is it a service, but it's, it will be, you know, it's the kind of business we want to bring in, business that's not here. That business is either going to the, to the Valero down in Jackson, or the, the pilot that's up in Circleville. So I'd love, I'm glad to see we're going to be keeping some of those funds here with the completion of this project, and this is one small, another small step of, of council helping to facilitate that as well. In regards to the tax issues, you know, I'll put my president hat on here real quick, and I want to thank Tom and his committee for, for handling this. This has been a, a difficult issue, and at the end of the day, however you guys go, you know, we're going to go into this together and go ask the taxpayers for some increased revenue to do the things we know they want us to do, and the, the city services to do. And last but not least, I want to, I, I want to take a second, thank Dustin for his, he's going to blush here, but Dustin took a lot of time, like I know every, every single one of you guys have done, going back and forth, which way do we go? It, it, you know, it really is a, this is kind of a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, and we want to get this right, and we want to do this right. And, you know, Pastor Williams, a couple of meetings ago, said, you know, we need courage. And I, I sat in, as a young councilperson in 2000, wasn't even 30 when I was elected, and if you'd ever thought, you know, just bringing a tax levy, not passing it on your own and, and passing on the tax increase to the resident, but just bringing that levy before voters did decide, obviously it's been a big decision, because we've never gotten to this point. It's been, you know, many, many years since we've even had the courage to, to face that reality, a lot of cutbacks, a lot of staffing reductions, and obviously the detriment of our streets have suffered for that, where we have tried to reprioritize and prioritize to the nth degree. But what I want to end on is, and I want to thank Dustin for his, I, I think Dustin summed up the anguish that everybody went through making decisions, and his email that he sent out to everybody was very well-written. It's public, if anybody wants it, I'll send it to you. But I, I think it goes to show the depths and the commitment that you guys as a group have, that, that Dustin, you know, took the time and, he must have an English teacher proofread it for him, because it was very well-written. But I want to thank you for, for that well-thought-out decision-making process, and, and I think it kind of sums up where we are as a group, as an administration, together with council, the other, the law directors, trying to move our, our, our great city forward into, to the future. A 10-year gap on that, if that's what you guys decide, that's fair enough. You know, that, I think that, that does lend some credence to we'll come back in 10 years, and if we did our diligence and improved, improved ourselves, I, I think this, this smart community that, that cares about one another will decide to, to reauthorize it, and if we, we, you know, not gained the trust and we, we've wasted those funds, well, they're not going to. And I, but I do think, you know, over time, the, you won't see the wasting of those funds. We've never, we've never been flushed for cash. This isn't going to make us flush for cash. This is going to give us an opportunity to start catching up on the streets, get caught up with the streets over time, but also allow our safety forces, which is near and dear to my heart. My dad's a retired firefighter, Chief Creed's department, I've grown up, I know many police officers and firefighters in my day, and those guys literally put their lives on the line every day. There's some bad press going around, but doesn't, that is what it is. Those are, you know, situations, individual cases, but the, the officer that's sitting here today, and every one of those, anytime you see a, a police car going down the street, know full well that, that they're doing their utmost to protect us. We know through the DAR program that we are getting at it, as far as reversing the scourge of, of drugs and, and, and what, the ravages that come with drugs. Every single problem we can see reverts back to the drug problem, and we're tackling it in new and thinking outside-the-box ways. These funds, again, will allow us to keep moving forward, and those, those opportunities, again, to, to protect and serve. And I'll leave it at that, Tom. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Carter. I want to repeat.
Thank you, President President Churchill. I'm going on a few items on tonight's agenda. I'll take eight, nine, and 15 together. When I'm done, I'll be happy to answer any questions, and Chief Creed is here also, and I'm sure he'd be happy to answer any questions if there's anything that I can't remember. The full purchase price for the new squad will be at or below $155,000. This is a state contract, so we didn't have to go out to bid, but the state contract is set to go up August 1st, correct? Which is one of the reasons we're asking for passage tonight. We, we've discussed this particular purchase for, well, it was discussed in last year's budget process, and we finally arrived. One of the, one of the delays was that we, we are doing a new funding borrowing approach, and we're working with a local bank as opposed to selling bonds that we have in the past, which, which does not necessarily keep the money local. The terms are something structured, instead of borrowing a note, which will mature in a year without a commitment to principal, this is a four-year bond with eight payments, interest rate two and a half percent. The bank is Vinton County National Bank. And we, we sort of, Chief Creed and I worked together on going through a local bank comfortable with, got a good rate, and I'm hoping to do more of this in the future. Relatively small loans, good interest rates, I think it's good for, it's good for the city to have these working relationships with local banks, and it's also good for the community to keep that business local. And we've had a good, good experience working with Vinton County. Bond council fee is something that we normally incur. You didn't see separate appropriations for this last year on any of the borrowing, because it was rolled in. This year, we're going to be paying, as structured, paying $1,300 upfront instead of amortizing it over four years. That just doesn't make a lot of sense. This, money is all coming out of safety levy capital. There's actually $55,000 approximately in cash that will be paid out of safety levy capital now. Essentially, it's a $55,000 now payment. The borrowing, which is item 15, is the $100,000 that'll be borrowed over, and repaid over those four years. This was also a discussion, the four years. Chief Creed was eager to pay off the debt more quickly than four years, which is commendable. I urged him, especially in light of the safety levy capital borrowing that we've been doing in terms of using that money to avoid layoffs, just stretching out those payments a little bit longer so that safety levy capital wasn't fully committed. So I, in a sense, discouraged him from, from paying it off so quickly, so we have a little bit more flexibility with cash. And then the last item, well, the last related item is nine, which is the trade-in of current squad, which will get approximately $5,500.
$5,000.
$5,000. It's in, it's in the ordinance, and that will be treated as a credit toward the purchase. So you've got three items, all interrelated. We had, we've had discussions on the necessity of this purchase. One of the, Councilwoman Patrick in particular has asked some good questions on this issue. One of the, really the driving reasons, no pun intended, for this purchase is that we are draining general fund money to pay for the maintenance of this vehicle, which has accrued rapidly during the year, the three vehicles, actually. This is a totally separate pot of money that can only be spent on capital, and it just, it makes good economic sense to, to swap out a fully operational vehicle for one that is, is just costing the city a lot of money. The last thing I'll leave with is that putting in the order today puts us out about six months from delivery, so we'd be looking at another six months. Hopefully, there's been significant repairs this year. Hopefully, we can avoid further repairs, but we're looking at six months before the new vehicle will be put into service. I know that was a lengthy description of those three items. Does anybody have any questions for either myself or the chief? With that, I will move on to item 13. That's just a first reading. We've had various discussions over the year about a couple of loans that have come out of Street Construction Fund. This is one of them. This is our last payment. Sometimes we have OPWC money that is matching fund. This is actually a loan we got some years back. This is the last payment on that loan that just missed being appropriated in the budget. This comes out of Street Construction. So that can go through three reads. If any committee discussion is necessary, I'd be happy to speak further on that. Item 17 is simply an accepting and appropriating money, again, budget neutral, and I believe, I spoke to Captain Washburn today, and for one thing, it's budget neutral, but for another, there's going to have to be a reprocessing of the grant, and a sort of a nightmare bureaucracy if this isn't passed tonight. So I would also encourage the waiver of free renewal and passage of item 17 tonight. I will quickly review, make sure I didn't miss anything. It's not apparent I did. With that, my report is concluded.
Thank you, Attorney Feeney. Law Director, Mrs. Ruff.
Thank you, President President Churchill. The number of cases that the municipal court continues to increase, that keeps our office very busy. So we continue to do that. As far as any tweaking that's being done to the language of the proposed levy, I would urge council to submit whatever changes they want to be requesting to the levy legislation soon. We're running very close to the deadline, filing with the Board of Elections, and we just want to make sure that that language is what it needs to be. So if you have that thought, I'd like to...
Thank you, Ms. Ruff. Okay, that brings us to on its participation. Council rule number 21, limits speaker to five minutes, and each subject to 15. Let's, please step to the microphone and give us your name and address. Just some comments related to items six and seven. Again, I looked through the package. I couldn't see specific wording. I apologize. I haven't been to all the meetings, so it may be, my concerns may be addressed in the actual legislation. But about 10 years ago, the city adopted a very liberal definition of street maintenance so that they could use gasoline packs and, and license plate levies to support basically the city's service department, which it, it goes to pay for today. A few years back, question is whether that's three or five, but somewhere in that range, it started borrowing money that was voted on by the voters for capital to use operation. All I can see here is the wording that we're going to add 0.4% to be used exclusively towards the maintenance and repair of city streets and alleys and for the operation of maintenance and police fire departments. My question, again, I apologize, it may be covered in the past, but it was implied that those are two separate items, but all combined in a 0.4. The question I would have is how specific is it that a portion of it goes to streets and how specific that a portion is going to safety services? Because otherwise, the streets get shortchanged again. We've used the word borrow from the safety levy capital. Borrow usually has the intent, meaning that it's to be repaid. I doubt that we're planning as a city to repay those funds into the safety levy capital unless we get some large windfall. And I haven't heard that the city started buying lottery tickets, so I doubt that that will happen. So my concern is someone who's asked council to address our streets for the last, you know, two-plus years, two and a half years, is that please make sure that the street levy portion is specifically stated and cannot be used for the safety service because we know that there'll be pressure to use it. So thank you.
Thank you, Attorney. It is in the legislation. Alan, do you think you ought to? Thank you. Anyone else who wants to speak?
My name is Jake McNeil. I live at 7 Bellcrest Lane. And I do get out and talk to people in the 5th Ward. Know a lot of you personally. I don't know how much Mr. Schubman goes out in the ward. I'm out in it all the time. I've talked to a lot of these people, and I can guarantee you one thing, your trust right now in the 5th Ward's about 90%, zero, about 10% good. Very low. You've got a long way to go to sell this to people in the 5th Ward. And I'm talking, I've talked over 200 people. So you've got a long, long way to go. The thing that bothers me about this is, the more I thought about this, it goes back to the schools. We look at our city schools. How many kids are we losing to the county? A whole building every year. You might as well just start shutting down every building every year. No playoffs going. Put them apart, look around. We're losing a building of kids every year to the county. So that tells me one thing. People's moving to the county. They're going to work the campus. They're going to work the clubs. City's not going to get any money because there's more housing development in the county than there is in the city. So who are you going to tax? I didn't tell you who you're going to tax. The retarded people like you that still pay city income taxes. All the people basically that administer it. But think about all the students we're losing. So we're losing tax payments every day, tons of them. 400 of the exact same people, Al's students. Think about that, 400 people. That's a lot of people. You're also losing a lot of young professional people. In the last week, I know four young professional people that's moved out of state. You know why? Because the state of Ohio has got four record to provide the type of jobs that they're getting out of college for. And Chillicothe, they can't find a job here for the better to support themselves. As far as this thing about the 4%, I wouldn't come in here tonight and tell, I turn on the TV, wow, what a sight. Chillicothe again, in the news, don't get any better. Chillicothe's fine. We're just taking these records, throw it in the trash can over here somewhere, no progressive discipline. Great, we're going to vote for a levy for this? There's a big trouble in the police department. It's Mr. Froll and Mrs. Gray was on TV. I watched them. I found it very unpleasant what they said, that there is some problems. No, there's not some problems. There are major problems in the police department. Pretty obvious. When you get rid of all the records and you can't get progressive discipline, Bud Mayer, you've got a real problem over there. You've got the FBI looking at it. You think they're looking at one thing? They're looking at a lot of things. They don't come in just with one thing. The other thing is, I want to touch base on real quick, the drop off of the lead from the lamps. I don't know how many of these been on any path to you lately, but you're in for a real sight. The city hasn't been having anybody grind out anything at all. It's almost to the revenue short. We got to stop commercial deliveries to that immediately. That means tomorrow. The people at Chillicothe pay for that ground. They deserve to dump there. You've got to stop the commercial until you get somebody grinding that up immediately. It's not fair if I lose a limb and I can't take it down there. That's what's going to happen. So what am I going to do? I'm going to leave that on the street. Looks like major neighborhood look back. Is that what we want? No, we want nice neighborhoods. That's what we're all talking about, nice neighborhoods. Well, you got to shut that off immediately. Somebody needs to step on some toes here and say, we're going to stop all commercial deliveries there until we start grinding up the stuff, getting that out. Just drive down there and take a look. You'd be amazed at the cars. Ain't our guy there? I was embarrassed when I went down there. I said, this is ridiculous. City, this administration doing nothing. As far as the house on Allen Avenue that's still standing, we hired a man. Right there by the fire avenue, damn, that mess. Matt, they're still sticking out the window, and we could hire my hair. This place, you got one on Sugar Street, more sugar. You got one on High Street, burned up six years ago. I don't know if you see it from there on there, the condemned building. There's no condemned building department out? The whole road's paved. Six years it's been sanded, right? No condemned for that, and hold up. Why? Something's going wrong here. But like I say, 90% of people in my board that I've talked to, and that's been over 200 of them, will not support anything. You've got a long way to trust them. So good luck to you. And one thing I got to say is, let's pay the streets completely. That's what you need to do, as Mr. Chapman first brought it up.
Anyone else who wants to speak?
Charles Cravers.
Charles Swat.
Cravers, 371 Place Street. For starters, I'm always believing, and I believe, and I know somebody else will believe it too, that speeding has to cease in Chillicothe sometime soon, if possible. And that if you hired two policemen, just write tickets on them, that they were more than right enough to pay their salary plus make money for the city. I don't see how you could, with all the speed we have. Because a lot of people, obvious reasons, are too much in a hurry. Carefully early now, you ever get there on time at a regular speed, there's always going to be speeders in Chillicothe. That needs to be addressed. I mean, just, and it's not just, I mean, regular drivers. It's construction people. It's city people. And I'm talking city truck going over the, through town, 45 or 50. I know they had to be one of these downtowns. And it says, say, Chillicothe on the side, what kind of message is that send to all our drivers? It's okay for it. I don't agree with this. If people in Chillicothe need to learn a lesson, I don't care what's taken, every cop in this city, and put them on every brick and street, just for a day, and just write tickets, and do just that, even if you have to bring somebody in from out of town to do this, at least for one day, because it's just, it's too rampant, and it needs to be taken care of. That's one. The other thing is, red signs will pop up all over county about the cops can stop you at any time and search your vehicle. That sign serves no purpose at all, except to tell the people who use drugs, there's a drug house nearby, and actually use it as a homing beacon to find the house until they're gone. And then when that drug house is gone, that done red sign is still there, making the city look, to all the visitors who drive through our county, letting other people who come in from out of state know that our city is not that nice. You better not stay here. There's drugs right here, or there's something wrong right here, even though it may not exist anymore. It's been eliminated, maybe gone five years, and now there's a nice family and two kids that live in that house, but there's still the red sign posted there at the end of the block that says otherwise. The thing about your increase on the taxes also, if you put it separately, I guarantee one will not pass. Because if I had it separately and it was me, and I thought that it would be appropriated for this and this own, and this and this own, then what can I afford? I probably wouldn't vote on one. If you put it together, but you make the people aware of where the money is going to go and how much of that money is going to go, and even if it's for maintenance or for equip, how much money is going to go to that equip or to something else? If I don't know that, I don't care what the streets are about, I'm not voting for it. I want to know where the pennies are going because, as he stated before, so many times, you bought money from one place, I know it's, you know, not going back. And I'll tell you why it would be that. What I'm prepared to do, and I suppose we probably should take a poll or something and ask that, but I would, I'd be willing to get a 0.5, five years, to have that reduced to 0.3 on year six, to get a kickstart on the streets and alleys in Chillicothe because they need it back. And I'm, I mean, there's so many places, you drive, and you're not staying in your lane because of the bad spots. And, I mean, some people, they don't, they don't be lucky enough and do it on that, to their property. But that's what I do when I'm in the city. But I need to know where that money is going. But I'd want a kickstart. And if you did, do the 0.5 and 0.3 on year six, and you really worked and made this city good in five years, look a lot better, maybe not perfect, but look a lot better, I guarantee you. The next five years, people will be thinking, you know, Chief got a lot in six years. On year 10, we might do that again. But it has to happen. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Anyone else who wants to speak?
My name is Terry Williams, and I live at 371 Flyblings Lane. Well, looks like we've got a lot of courage. We've had to meet that up with pragmatism. I'm really proud to hear the kind of discussion that's gone on with council in the last week. I'm proud to hear Ms. Patrick indicate that she would like to see a little more specifics on this levy. I'm glad to hear Mr. Froll talk of his deep decision-making that had to go. And I'm really glad to hear that even though Councilman Truchel and Councilwoman Neal don't necessarily think that this proposal of a 410 levy for 10 years is the best idea, they're willing to compromise in the middle. I think that's really healthy for our city. I think it shows a lot of courage and a lot of conviction. And I hope that as we go forward, the message to voters will be, as Mr. Truchel has said, this is not a temporary need, but we understand the need for accountability, that the temporary portion of this levy is not temporary because we think the need will be temporary, but it's temporary because we want to give the voters the ability to hold us accountable. You're not just entering into this with courage, you're entering into a covenant with the voters. You're extending this offer to the voters of a way to fix a lot of the problems that we have, with the understanding that you will be held accountable. Now, many other individuals have sat in the seats that you sit in today, and some of them have caused the kind of trouble that you're dealing with today. They've caused the kind of distrust, they've caused the kind of suspicion, they've caused the kind of weariness that you have to deal with, and that's not fair. The only thing that you can do in this place is make sure that what you do in these seats that you now occupy, whatever action you take, doesn't create distrust and doesn't create malice going forward. And I believe you're going to be able to do that. I hope that this council stays firm in their resolve to be honest with the voter. I hope this council stays firm in their resolve to have courage and conviction to compromise. And I hope that this council is able to do the kinds of things with this money that need to be done. Again, provided we're able to get it passed. And I believe we will. Contrary to how Mr. McNeil feels, I think many young professionals like myself do want to come to Chillicothe. And we've come to Chillicothe because we want to make a good life here. We want to make a good life here, and a good life costs money. Perhaps individuals go to the county because they receive better services. That shouldn't be the case. I don't believe that's the case. I believe we're doing a pretty good job with the money we have, all things considered. This is an investment in our community, it's an investment going forward, and I hope council will enter into that covenant of trust, knowing that the ball is in your court. When you receive these funds and you receive this money, transparency, courage, conviction have to continue from today on through those 10 years, because there will be a time when we come back and have to ask for that money. I appreciate all your hard work, and I appreciate the courage and conviction and compromise that we see in councils. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. Anyone else who wants to speak? Seeing none, that brings us to old business. Any members of council who wants to speak? Mrs. Ames.
Thank you, President Trump. This evening, before we leave, I mean, might you want to hear what I have to say?
Very, very interesting what you asked me to say.
I want to make sure you, you mentioned about that we have a long road ahead of us to get this passed. I agree. We have to get information out there to the public.
A long road.
Correct information out. For instance, tonight, you said, who's going to be paying for this? Retirees? I'm sorry, that's incorrect information.
I said, as a retiree, I pay for it because I still pay.
You don't pay income tax and pensions. It is accepted in here.
I do pay city income tax, because that's what I say.
Mr. McNeil, point of order?
Yes, I wrote down what you said. So the information that's going out, please make sure that you're finding out correct information, factual information. There will be some people who may have agendas against the levy. There may be people who put out misinformation on purpose. There may be people who put out misinformation accidentally because they're not aware of all the issues and the numbers. So if you've got questions about the levy, please ask the council people. Please ask the mayor. Please ask the auditor. He has the numbers. He does the math. He keeps us informed. But don't fall prey to rumors going out there. Make sure that you get the tax about the levy and what's happening. Okay?
Thank you, Mrs. Ames. Anyone else who wants to speak? Good morning.
Thank you, President Trump. I'd like to thank Don Ellis for, for the effort he's putting in. Again, he's working hard to get these neighborhood crime watch going. We've had two meetings in the last about two and a half weeks down at Pollen Park about two and a half weeks ago. Nice meeting down there, which was the original one that he started. And they've made some great strides. And the one he's working on now had a real nice turnout at, up at Holman Road for the Hilltop Crime Watch area. Nice turnout. He's starting that up. So anytime you can... So, anytime you can support Mr. Ellis, please, please do so, and attend these meetings. We know right now, the times are tough for many crimes, so we need all help where you can.
Thank you, Mr. Bonner. Anyone else wish to speak? Okay, that brings us to petitions and correspondence from the clerk.
Mr. President Proton, thankfully, I have none to report.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to new business from members of council. Anyone else? Mrs. Ames.
I got one more. This is good news. Pool is going to be closing August seventeenth, Sunday, and the Humane Society and the city are working together to do Dog Days of Summer, we're going to have a big event. I've handed out the council, I have some extra copies here, the day is going to start off with the One Pig Doggy Dash, Green Park, and these are both fundraisers for the Humane Society and the city. And pre-registration will go up until August eighth, and registration is fifteen dollars, includes a t-shirt for the owner and a bandana for the doggy. And then starting at three, we're going to have all kinds of events inside the pool, photo booths, dog costume contest, canine demonstration by the police department, food vendors, vet tables set up, just all kinds of things. Then the pool's going to close at five-thirty, open again at six o'clock for the Doggy Splash, which is going to be sponsored by Dr. Lisa and Anthony Culp here at Animal Care Clinic. And from six to seven-thirty, dogs consume with their owners, and there are going to be retrieving contests and races and so forth. Then the pool's going to close at seven-thirty, and eight o'clock, Public Library, it's going to be showing a room of cats and dogs, for owners and their pets at the stage in the Octant Park. So all of this is going to be on the city website, we're going to process the flyers put together for all of this, but the Doggy Dash, if you're interested in this, reservations have to be made by August eighth in order to ensure you get the t-shirt and bandana. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ames. Anyone else wish to speak? I wish to thank members of council for your efforts in helping with this levy process. It wasn't easy, give yourselves a pat on the back. It wasn't easy, this started in late April to get this going. Especially want to thank Sherry Rufford and her staff, Teresa does a tremendous job. I spent hours on the phone with her, and emails and things of that nature. Feeny, you also. Anything need to be tweaked, then a new call. And I really appreciate all of them. And that brings us to committee assignments and meeting dates. There's only two assignments. Item, let's see, item fourteen-one oh three is the Finance Committee, assignment one of the three. It's Finance, a request to consider modifying current proposed tax legislation to an additional point oh one percent for safety personnel and point oh one percent for general fund operating expenses. And assignment fourteen-one oh four is to Finance, also, a request for legislation to appropriate twenty thousand dollars for the general fund miscellaneous fees to pay for ongoing litigation. Also, next Monday, August fourth, six-thirty, will be our special meeting with regard to passing our tax levy for the third reading. And that concludes that. Now that brings us to legislation. Item three. Third reading of a resolution authorizing the appropriation of funds in the amount of seven thousand twelve dollars as participating local funds for 2015 to the Ohio Valley Regional Development Commission on behalf of the City of Chillicothe, Ohio. Third reading. Thank you, and the roll call in the resolution? Ames.
Yes.
Bonner.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Crowell.
Yes.
Tappman.
Yes.
Trutville. Yes. Item four. Second reading of an ordinance appropriating two thousand four hundred seventy dollars to purchase computer software for the Chillicothe Municipal Court and declaring an emergency. Second reading. Mr. Showman.
I'd like to request to waive the three reading rule, as it's important for this technology to be upgraded.
Second by Mr. Bonner. Roll call in motion. Ames.
Yes.
Bonner.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Crowell.
Yes.
Showman.
Yes.
Tappman.
Yes.
Trutville.
Yes.
Item five. Second reading of an ordinance appropriating twenty-seven thousand two hundred dollars to cover the city's matching funds to purchase two new replacement buses for use within the Transit Department of the City of Chillicothe and declaring an emergency. Second reading. Item six. Second reading of a resolution declaring the necessity of amending sections one sixty-three point zero three, one sixty-three point zero eight, and one sixty-three point sixteen of the codified ordinances of the City of Chillicothe in order to provide for an increase in the city income tax levied from one point six percent to two point zero percent, directing that such increase be used exclusively toward maintenance and repair of city streets and alleys within the City of Chillicothe, and for the operation and maintenance of the police and fire departments. Resolving that said amendment should be placed before the electors at the election to be held November fourth, 2014, and declaring an emergency. Second reading. Item seven. Second reading of an ordinance amending sections one sixty-three point zero three, one sixty-three point zero eight, and one sixty-three point sixteen of the codified ordinances of the City of Chillicothe, Ohio, in order to provide for an increase in the city income tax levied from one point six percent to two point zero percent, and directing that such increase be applied exclusively for the purpose of repairing and maintaining the streets and alleys within the City of Chillicothe, and for the operation and maintenance of the police and fire departments, and declaring an emergency. Second reading. Item eight. First reading of an ordinance appropriating one hundred fifty-five thousand dollars for the purchase of a squad for the Chillicothe Fire Department, appropriating one thousand three hundred dollars for bond council fees, and authorizing the mayor and the Safety Service Director to enter into a contract to purchase a squad and declaring an emergency. First reading. Mr. Crowell.
At this time, I would like to ask that we please waive the three reading rule.
Second by Mr. Bonner. Roll call in the motion. Ames.
Yes.
Bonner.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Crowell.
Yes.
Showman.
Yes.
Tappman.
Yes.
Trutville.
Yes.
Item nine. First reading of an ordinance declaring a particular vehicle obsolete or not needed, and authorizing the Safety Service Director to sell said vehicle simultaneously with the purchase of a new vehicle, and declaring an emergency. First reading. Mr. Crowell.
Since this goes with number eight, I would ask that we please waive the three reading rule.
Second by Mrs. Gray. Roll call in the motion. Ames.
Yes.
Bonner.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Crowell.
Yes.
Showman.
Yes.
Tappman.
Yes.
Trutville.
Yes.
Item ten. First reading of an ordinance appropriating fifty-three hundred thirty-six dollars fifty cents to purchase a radio for the Chillicothe Police Department to capture emergency broadcast from the Chillicothe City Schools and declaring an emergency. First reading. Mr. Crowell.
I ask, so that we can get this ready for the coming school year, that we please waive the three reading rule.
Second by Mr. Bonner. Roll call in the motion. Ames.
Yes.
Bonner.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Crowell.
Yes.
Roll call in the ordinance. Ames.
Yes.
Bonner.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Trutville.
Yes.
Item eleven. First reading of an ordinance amending ordinance number ninety-eight dash eighty-eight and declaring an emergency. First reading. Mrs. Ames. Second by Mrs. Gray. Roll call in the motion. Ames.
Yes.
Bonner.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Trutville.
Yes.
Roll call in the ordinance. Ames.
Yes.
Bonner.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Crowell.
Yes.
Showman.
Yes.
Item twelve. First reading of an ordinance incorporating a new pay scale for the position of full-time municipal court security officer into the budget for the Chillicothe Municipal Court, beginning January one, 2015. First reading. Item thirteen. First reading of an ordinance appropriating twelve thousand six hundred twelve dollars sixty cents for the final payment on a ten-year no-interest loan from Ohio Public Works for the 2004 street program. First reading. Item fourteen will not be read. Item fifteen. First reading of an ordinance providing for the issuance of not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars emergency medical services vehicle acquisition bonds, and declaring an emergency. First reading. Mr. Crowell.
At this time, I would like to waive the three reading rule, since this goes along with the rest of the squad purchase.
Second by Mr. Bonner. Roll call in motion. Ames.
Yes.
Bonner.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Crowell.
Yes.
Roll call in the ordinance. Ames.
Yes.
Bonner.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Trutville.
Yes.
Item sixteen. First reading of an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of Chillicothe, Ohio, to execute any and all documents in connection with granting an easement and right-of-way to the City of Chillicothe by Pilot Travel Centers LLC to allow for installation of a water line, fire hydrant, and the pertinences, and declaring an emergency. First reading. Mrs. Patrick.
I'd like to motion to waive the three reading rule.
Second by Mr. Crowell. Roll call in motion. Ames.
Yes.
Bonner.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Crowell.
Yes.
Roll call in the ordinance. Ames.
Yes.
Bonner.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Trutville.
Yes.
Item seventeen. First reading of an ordinance accepting and appropriating ten thousand four hundred forty dollars in funds received from the U.S. Department of Justice, Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program for the purchase of a traffic trailer that indicates